And. Ask off. Notice to hold teleconference meetings pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Due to the current federal state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person to person contact due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. In accordance with Minnesota statutes thirteen D David point zero two one, members of the public are not permitted to attend the meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. Link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comment for school board meetings during opportunity for visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. To an email address of Barbara Ripley and that's B R I P L E Y at PelicanRapids.k twelve dot M N dot U S. Now we'll call the meeting to order. Have everybody in attendance stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Brian or Jerry, do we have anything to add or?
Put into the. The the agenda should be good.
Good, okay. Motion by Ann, we have a second.
Also.
Second by Mike, any discussion on the agenda? Here we know discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, was both same. Motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Barb, do you have anything? Okay. I see one person in the audience, so we'll move on. Next item up will be administrative reports. Elementary principal and activities director, Mr. Nelson. Um, busy day today?
No. Enrollment.
Tell us about it.
We're at four thirty-three last year, last May, we're four twenty-six. So elementary is up. Biggest change is the kindergarten's up ten. And they're up six from what left from sixth grade and then kindergarten coming in, so. Good, and I don't have the preschool numbers at this time, I'll have those for next meeting. The changes with the drop off and pickup is going well at elementary and thanks to the parents for that change. Students. Are enjoying being back in school. We did do a fire drill last week, so we have one of those under our health. And with our change of the COVID, we're on class going out of time. We did have the school cleared in two minutes and fifteen seconds, so that's pretty good. So, fun activities. I'd like to thank Brian Evenson for his years of service. Brian will be stepping down as girls golf coach. And he is coached golf, basketball, and been a very successful, dedicated person to Pelican Rapids. So we'd like to thank him for his years of service. Today we got guidance on cross-country section tournament. This cross-country section tournament will be the week of October twelfth. It could be any one of those days in there, whatever the committee selects. They could have four teams at one time at the meet. They could clear the course and bring another four in, or they could do four one day or later that day. And then the next day have four more teams come in. However, they decide to set it up with no more than twenty-four runners on the course at one time. Each team could have six runners and then spectators that can be no more than two hundred and fifty there. Soccer guidelines also came. Their tournament will be from October twelfth through October twenty-fourth. Max they could play two games in one week. Again, no more than two hundred and fifty spectators. In the past, for section games, we have not been allowed to do any live streaming. This year we are, so we can live stream postseason games this year because of the limited number of people that can attend. So at least for soccer weekend, they really encourage pre-selling of tickets. So we don't have ticket takers taking exchanging money. At at the gate, so we will be working on that process, what that looks like. This morning the board met, they approved volleyball will be starting on next Monday, the twenty-eighth. They will have eleven week season. They can have fourteen dual competitions, which means no tournaments like they've had in the past this year. Everything would be just. Like Gus versus Barnesville, can't have more than two teams at one site on any day. At this time, there will be no spectators allowed. Into the school facilities, so there will be no fans at volleyball except for the workers, the officials, the players and coaches.
No parents.
No parents.
Cardboard cutouts.
Was that?
Cardboard cutouts.
Cardboard cutout, Mr. Larson may be the only family outstanding there. After the high school meeting today, we met as A Ds for about an hour and a half H O L conference. And we're meeting again tomorrow in person to try to get a volleyball schedule, junior high football schedule, junior high volleyball, junior high basketball. All those schedules that now we can actually start looking at, we know dates, start working on tomorrow. They also voted to have football starting on Monday. First game for football will be on October ninth. They'll play six regular season games. Postseason format at this time to be determined, but they said it will be done by November twenty-eighth. And again, maximum of two hundred and fifty fans at a contest. And we will be working on figuring out how to get tickets divvied, where they go, who gets priority. We're hoping we get a little guidance from the high school league on. How many go to the visiting team, how many the home team? Because we don't want to be where we go somewhere and no visiting fans are allowed and only their home fans. So we're hoping there's a process set up to help guide us through that. Concession stands, they are. Suggesting that they are highly discouraged for the making of food. Prepackaged food would be okay, like your candy bars, your powder, powerys, tops, waters, things like that, things that people are opening would be okay. Move flu, media is still to be announced whether media will be let into events indoors at this time. So I don't have an answer for you a little bit whether you can come and take pictures at this time.
Keep you posted.
I will keep you posted, yes, so.
Will they livestream volleyball then?
Volleyball will be livestreamed, yep.
You said that soccer in the past wasn't able to what, wasn't allowed.
Any section games, so like a section basketball volleyball at home, we were not able to livestream those, we could tape them.
Gotcha.
And put them on after the fact, but they section didn't want people staying home just watching on TV.
Sure.
But because that's. Watch it later, so.
Region.
Correct, yep.
Livestream football too though.
Yep, yep. We sure hope all the technology works, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Helgwood will be busy here starting tomorrow.
How many current volunteers will there be to run cameras?
Other questions?
Oh.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that. Yeah, good news. Okay. Next up, Mr. Carr, high school principal. Acting administrator.
Okay. Tenement or enrollment at the end of September here as of last week was four hundred and nineteen students, seven through twelve. Safe gyms, we had a fire drill and with the fire drill we have to do it twice, one for the armed group, one for the black group. Complete our bus evacuation and then we'll have a shelter in place here soon. Communication, just so you know, communicating is key right now. And we are communicating high school items through Twitter, at the Vic the Bike, Facebook and school website, so. And we would, that would be district wide, so. COVID just, we're following anything that we're doing, we're really working with the COVID team and following the M D H and county health protocols. Tomorrow we have Title IX training tomorrow, that'll be in the morning. Few items on the agenda tonight for consent items. During workshop, Lori Park, our elementary music teacher resigned. And we had a student teacher. Lauren Halloman, who was going to student teach in the high school and elementary. And right now we're going to have hire her as a parent, she's going to be in the music room and working alongside Mr. Peter. So we're going to hire Mr. Peter back. Lauren will be done with her student teaching in twelve weeks. And at that time, we will look at if we will make a change and have her finish out the year as the teacher. That should be all done, so. Two parents, just a reminder with parents being hired, we waited until right before school started to hire parents. Because we didn't know what the year was going to look like, we had some returnments, some changes in parents, so we waited right before the school year started. And then Tonya Hundredwood has been hired as club lights coordinator. Any additions with the agenda items, Mr. Nelson, that you have?
No, okay, just a resignation right here.
Yep, okay. Policy committee met last week, so we had a few policies revised. So they met before our work session last Monday, went through them. And then an M O U for approval tonight, and that's for coaching, extracurricular. And hopefully we don't have to use that M O U this year, that's the goal, in case we do. We would use the M O U if anything gets canceled during the season or before the season or the activities. Upcoming events at the high school, we got student pictures tomorrow for grades seven through eleven. We got homecoming week the following week, coronation is on a Tuesday, it's not on a Monday night. That's because we have a home or I think it's a home grill soccer on that Monday, so Tuesday will be coronation. Right now that Plan A is outside at the football field, Plan B is bad weather would be inside, but it'd be just the court only at this time. As of today. Mid-quarter is October second. It's right around the corner, October fifteenth, sixteenth is M E A, there'll be no school. And the first course November sixth. And parent teacher conference are in November, we do not know what parent teacher conferences are going to look like in November. So COVID team meets weekly, we kind of plan the activities for the week ahead, making adjustments, changes. Again, following M D H and the county health protocols, but we meet meet weekly and we have different groups that are asking for when they can do stuff. And and right now we just use as of today in September, so week by week. The great news is we've completed two weeks, so our goal is to get through a third week. Any questions? Kids have been good, staff's been good, it's been, it's been a good start. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Mr. Steve's isn't here for a building report. All right, finance director, Mr. Martinez.
Not here?
Welcome.
All right, so we just finished the second period of the year, that's the end of August. A lot of movement. And what I mean by that is I'll highlight in our investment accounts, so. We started the, our beginning balance with four point five million dollars sitting in our investment accounts. Two of those million dollars were recalled by the Minnesota eight anticipation program, which is the short-term loan that we borrowed last year and we paid it back. We ended up making a hundred and ninety-six dollars, so it didn't cost us, we actually made a little bit of money. We received about one point two million dollars in state aid. And just to kind of recap, the state switched its model to paying school districts on eighty percent now, twenty percent on receivables. For the month of July, we were pretty dry, we didn't receive any penny from the state of Minnesota, they're now starting to catch up. So we received significant aid in the month of August. At the end of the month, we had three point two million dollars sitting in our investment account, it's a pretty healthy balance to keep. Our O P E V account, again, it's just. Earning a little bit of interest, six dollars in dividends. And these are about twenty dollars a month for the administrative fees, so we lost a little money there on a month to month. Where we make our money in our investment for our O P E trust is because we invest a lot in CDs when they mature is when we really make money. So at the end of the year, we always make about thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars depending on how much and for what term the CDs are for. So even though fees are high, we always make it at the end when the CD matures. Going into the general fund, again, we pulled two point five million dollars and we brought it down so we could pay that short-term aid. And you see that coded here under accounts payable. Total accounts payable for the month of August were two point eight million dollars. This is the highest, highest I've ever processed any, any accounts payable for the district, but that has to do because of the two million dollars payroll. Stayed very good in line, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in payroll. So at the end of the month, we're sitting with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our bank account. And again, just the process, so you guys know, we measure our cash flow, we we try to keep as much cash as we can in our investments. That way our money can grow and then whenever we see this this balance on this checking account go down, that I pull from the investment down to the checking to cover expenditure. With just a little bit of in terms of how we restructure the money. Pay cash account has been a little dormant, now that we're starting to get a few, a few games on our calendar, we're going to start to use. Use this account, normally the petty cash account is to pay a lot of our. A lot of our officials when they come and officiate varsity game, varsity games, but you'll see a little bit more movement in that account. Student activities account, this is the new guest P eighty-four. Any student activity under the district is now under board approval, so we're going to start to see a lot of movement here from student organizations. And it'll be my job to make sure you guys stay up to up to code on that to make sure you guys see how that money is being utilized. Questions regarding any of our cash flow projections or anything in terms of our money and how we manage it and move it? Moving on, this is our collateral report, again, this is just our insurance from the bank saying that at any point in time, we're covered up to two point three million dollars. Whenever we go, whenever we have more money in our bank than we should, we pull money from our banking account and then we invest in our in our investment portfolio. So in the meantime, we're pretty good. Journal entries for the month of August, these are just journal entries, so I can make my books balance at the end of the month. Nothing significant. Other than, yeah, nothing significant, just making sure that the money sits in the right, right accounts. Wires, this is all the payables that we did for the month. Again, just a few things to note is. The two million dollar payment that we did to. To U S Bank where we took out that short aid anticipation. The other thing that was just kind of in terms of high activity was. Lake Country Service, this is for many services that we pay. Normally in August is when they send us the majority part of the early childhood program. So in addition to our technology services and many others, so we ended up paying about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from many of the services that we hired for them and they're very good services. Those are all of our payables that I have for you guys. The majority of the time that I want to spend in terms of the report is going to be in the aid anticipation or I'm sorry, the levy certification, which will be in the business items to go ahead and. And approve it. A little bit of a change from when I gave you guys kind of a full eating in detail reporting, if you guys remember me saying that. This report is going to change significantly from here on until December, when we have our truth indexation and then we certify the final number. And that change was the integration, remember? Last Monday, we had an adjustment there of about forty-nine to fifty thousand dollars. That has now been resolved at the state end, so the new numbers now show us receiving more levy dollars. The one that I'm still waiting to get a word on from is the L T F M, we have a fifty thousand dollar adjustment here that has to do with the asbestos project that. That we completed in two rather than three years that we had filled the paperwork for M D E. So once we get that corrected, we should have our final numbers, right now we're projected to levy for three point nine million dollars. But again, the thing we want to do is we're going to certify for the maximum. So when you guys pass the motion, please say maximum, this is what we're going to send to our county and the state. So as numbers change and more levy dollars decide to appear, we always claim every single penny. Any other questions regarding the levy certification?
That's just a motion and a second, order approval, not a resolution? Okay.
So that's what I have for you guys, any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, any questions? We're good, thanks. And interim superintendent Jerry Ness.
Yes, are you hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of things here related to M R E A, you'll notice at the end of the agenda, we have some regional meetings, September twenty-second, twenty-third. Highly recommend to participate, the M R E A is certainly there is our lobbyist organization that helps us. At at the state level and it gives focuses on rural schools, which we certainly are. So hopefully some board members administrators are able to attend that. We also are signing up for the M R E A convention, it's going to be virtual, we had a few questions on that from the board, it's. It's in the middle of November, I forget the exact dates, but what's different this year is the all, the sessions are live. And but they're recorded and you can watch these for up to two weeks following the convention, so you've got time to be able to do that. And then Ann is working on a on a M S, an M S B A resolution, which M R E A is also going to help us on. Regarding seasonal rec properties and Rudy, I'm hoping you can jump back in here. And relay a little bit of information related to seasonal rec properties. Or is that fair to ask you right now, Rudy, you got that dumb stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, a high hot topic item, especially in our area. One of the main things of the resolution we'll kind of talk about is that seasonal recreational area. And and it's very complicated, even how the statues are written, because as you guys have seen, the levy certification report has thousands of equations on where the. The market value of a property gets accounted for in terms of seasonal rec, there's a couple of items that it really hits. And it's where we see the majority of the impact on it. And it's this first three lines. The first ones that we have when we certify our levies is the operating levy referendum, these are border approved, this is what we ran last fall. So any operating levy referendums, seasonal rec gets excluded from it. So essentially the resolution that we're trying to put together is it will include that seasonal rec could potentially be included into the funding formulas. What that will do is spread the population that gets accounted for, so essentially our taxpayers will receive the benefit here. Now, the main calculation for the border approved is you take your number of pupils times the amount that you are going to. Pass the operating referendum for amongst all the properties within your school district. So now if we include seasonal rec there, the spread will be larger, which means that hopefully in the near future. Referendums will be much easier to approve and that way your your residential properties, your homesteads. Don't have such a big burden to pay those tax dollars, so that's kind of the meat and 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 bones behind that. Same thing with the local optional, because there's equalization factors. When you add, when you add seasonal rec to that second line, again, that spread per taxpayer goes down. So that means our taxpayers will be more likely and hopefully have more of a positive rating. But really where we maximize is in our operating capital, when you introduce operate, when you introduce. Seasonal rec here, we have the potential to potentially get new levy dollars, so that's what we're looking into. Anything else you want me to touch on, Mr. Ness?
No, probably looking more to Ann now, M S B A delegates, they, you put resolutions. And then at the M S B, I don't want to say convention, delegate convention, if you will, they will take a look at all the resolutions and and vote to support or not support. So so this is just a a first grassroots effort. You know, it's been worked on before, there's a long history with this, but it but it just, it's still doesn't mean it's any less important for Pelican Rapids School District. I believe Rudy, you said something like forty-seven percent of the properties are seasonal rec, was that correct number?
Yes, that is exactly correct, over forty-five percent of the properties in our area are classified as seasonal rec. So as you guys start to think about that, it is significantly. And again, the major change happened in two thousand and one during the Jazz event tours where they they removed those to try to make it more fair. I'm not sure for who it was fair, but but that is what we're fighting for, especially for us, for a district that we are land rich. But it's not being equitably distributed.
And I think there is a a home is a home, whether it's your first home or second home. We're just looking to to have the fair share paid to the district, Ann, would you like to comment anymore on the delegate assembly?
Yeah, it's usually like the first week in December, I believe, and so the district, well, I guess everybody has the opportunity to go, but so many first districts. And they had an opening last year, so I joined, so I went to my first one last year and I talked a little bit about this with M S B A. And they just encouraged to write the resolution and bring it the grassroots way, and I feel like it's something that might help Pelicans, help our school and. And I guess all the taxpayers too, really. One thing I had noticed too from M R E A was that the seasonal rec, the dollars are still paid, but they end up going into a different pot, is that, is that correct?
Yes, it's it's complex, there's a, there's a different fund, but I think from what Rudy was saying is we would benefit more greatly if it would come directly to the district from from the taxes, yeah.
That, yeah, it ends up going into the state's funds, somehow those taxes still end up being paid on the seasonal rec props, but then the state actually gets the funding versus the local school.
Yep. And and that's what I had, the other things that I'll be reporting on are are the policies that are on the agenda, so I'll comment when we get to those, so any, any questions?
For me. I know this wasn't anything new with the resolution, but I know Deb Wannick had worked a number of years feverishly. And exhaustingly trying to get some headway, but this was, it's been a few years, so this is the same, same issue. But this was, it's been a few years, so this is the same, same issue, and we'll try again.
You know, we'll try with the MSBA, and if, and if that does not pass the delegates, you know, we could do something just specifically for Pelican Rapids because of the high, that's a very unusual high percentage. And, and so maybe we might have better luck going on a smaller scale just for our district, rather than trying to change the whole state. That's a, that's a big lift, so we'll, we'll work through it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to consent items.
John, can we add one more thing?
Yes.
Just, um, was it, I'm going to lose track here. We received ISD 548, received the Chamber Member of the Year Award. So congratulations to the school board, administration and staff. They talked about, you know, when they talked about ISD 548, they talked about the seven habits, different things that have happened over the last few months here that we've done. And, you know, the signs with the teachers, Billy Morrell during the time and everything we organized for Dr. Ed. So congratulations, and I do want to say thank you to all the businesses for all their support that they give us here at the school too, so. And Mr. and Mrs. Doc can receive the pride award, so. Brittany got to be on both.
That's good to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for the Chamber of Commerce. Our next item up will be the consent items. Item A, board meeting minutes, August 3rd and 17th, 2020 meetings. Financial claims and August bills. Treasurers report. Accept donations to the scholarships in memory of Marlon and Marlene Evanson. From Glenn and Colleen Markie, $20. The Viking Elementary in memory of Verona Peterson, from Dawn and Diane Erickson, $25. Item E, personnel accept the resignation of Lori Park as elementary music teacher effective September 2nd, 2020. Accept the resignation of Brian Evanson as head girls golf coach. Hire Amy King as long-term substitute. Hire Jeff Peter as part-time elementary music teacher. Hire Lauren Holman as elementary music para. Hire Andrea Hart as special education para. Hire Tanya Honrude as club bikes coordinator. Hire Marcela Murillo as preschool para, and hire Katie Thorson as preschool para. I think we've discussed most of that, any questions or anything else to add? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items as they've been read.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, do we have a second? Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the consent items? There are no discussion, all of the favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Consent items carry. Next item up, business item, certify the proposed levy for the tax year 2021 to 2022 at the maximum amount. And Rudy just went over all that. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Ann makes the motion, do we have a second? Second by Brenda. And that's to certify the proposed levy for the tax year 21, 21, 22 at the maximum amount as stated on the agenda. Any discussion on certifying the proposed levy? There are no discussion, all those in favor approving the proposed levy signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, motion carries. Item B, approve the, approve the revisions of the following policies. 506, student discipline. 522, title, title nine, sexist non-discrimination policy grievance procedures and processes. 533, for wellness, and 616, school district system accountability. And those are policy committees, just have any words for us?
I, I could give an overview here of the, the changes in your packet that Barb sent out. You have the red line versions, we, we purchase the policy. I, I get the policy, I guess I don't know what exactly to call it, for MSBA, their, their procedures that they review all of the policies, update them after legislative session. The first one, the student discipline, there's some pretty minor changes. It's way down in H, section 7, H. And the establishment of a school and community advisory team to address chemical abuse problems in the district. So that was the only change in that policy. Moving on to the sexual non-discrimination policy, title nine. What they added there was sexual harassment, and this related to both students and employees. And they, and they also added some training requirements for administration and staffs who are working through that, to, to be trained. The wellness committee, we, we had a local committee. Normally, when we're doing MSBA policies, we pretty much adopt what the MSBA has recommended. Wellness is one of the differences, there's a lot of local flavor to a wellness policy. And we have a committee that, that made some changes, and everyone agreed that we should follow the changes made there. You know, one of the, one of the highlights, or highlights there, food and beverage marketing in schools, consistent with nutrition, education, and health promotion. So we're, we're trying to follow standards, and certainly, everyone in the state has done a lot better job with wellness policies. And the, the last one, the school district accountability system, there is, there, so the, 506 took away a committee, by 616 added a committee that you have to add. So we have to have an advisory committee to establish the school board to ensure active community participation in all phases of planning and improving the instruction and curriculum affecting site and district academic standards. And this will relate, you know, world's best workforce committees working with that will fit in nicely here. So those were the, the changes that the, I know Greg and Ann were there. Not sure if they have other comments, but we were in agreement that we'd recommend these revisions to the board for approval.
Greg, anything to add?
No.
All right, thanks. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions of the policy, 506, 522, 533, and 616. Motion by Brenda. Do we have a second? Second by Ann. Any discussion on even the revisions to the policies? There are no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Same. Policies, policies carry. Those we got them. I have a C, approve a memorandum of understanding with Pelican Rapids Education Association relating to the coaching and extracurricular. This is what we discussed last time. And everybody here is familiar with it?
Mr. Corp, would you like to review it briefly?
Well, what's the, what you know, advisor? They'll be paid in terms of their salary if they're, if their season is canceled. Okay, so that, all head coaches, coaches and advisors, I complete 50% of the weeks, and their canceled season or half of their events shall be full. So if it's less than half or hasn't started, they'd be paid two-thirds. If they complete more than half, they would be paid their full salary. All the late compensation we paid at the conclusion of the season, I don't see that happening now with football and volleyball being moved to the fall. So I don't see anything of you paid right after the, the season. Any questions? Again, hopefully, we don't have to rely on the MOU.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to approve an MOU with the Pelican Rapids Education Association relating to coaching and extracurricular pay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Now, any discussion on the MOU? There are no discussion, all those in favor approving the MOU signify by saying aye. Aye. Greg, those are the, yeah, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we're up to upcoming meetings, and as mentioned earlier, MREA fall meetings, which will be virtual, September 22nd, 23rd. And Barb will be able to register us, if need be, or?
Yeah, let me know.
Okay. And work session, October 5th, 2020, 6:00 PM, and regular meeting is, is on October 19th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. And entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mike, do we have a second to adjourn? Second by Brenda, any discussion? There are no discussion, all of the favor returning signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.